Welcome to the Board of Slicks. Rice, please, for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is the beginning of the budget process, and we'll be spending a lot of quality time together over the next few weeks. And we'll be looking forward to hearing from the public as to what the Board of Selectmen Town of Simsbury budget is for the upcoming year. What we thought we'd do tonight is, obviously, there's a lot of information in here and a lot to look at and digest, and what we thought we'd do tonight is just give you a brief overview. I'll ask Mary Ann to really walk you through the budgets, some of the changes from last year, and some of the requests, where the additions and deletions were made and the requests that were not funded. I'm pleased to report that the Board of Selectmen, the budget that I'm presenting to the Board of Selectmen tonight is a budget of 0.5 percent increase over last year's budget. This means that this is the fifth year in a row that we've kept our expenditures to a level below the 2008-2009 budget. We did that with a lot of hard work with our staff, really because of the economic conditions, the pressure on revale, the pressure of the unemployment rate, the stagnant grantless growth, and we feel that our taxpayers really can't pay more than they're paying. So we really brought in a very conservative budget for you to review. We also present this budget in light of the state budget concerns. The governor presented his budget, and we're seeing a $200,000 decrease right off the bat in general fund revenues to the town, with a potential looming of a loss of $6 million if the car tax elimination is passed. So that's a significant concern for us. The Town of Simsbury receives about $5 million in education cost sharing formula, and our total state funds are actually less than the $6 million we would lose if the car tax proposal did pass. So that's a significant cause for concern with us. Just for the public's review, the budget that's being presented tonight totals $18,128,810. That's a $90,210 increase over last year's budget, or a 0.5 percent increase over this last year. We have, as I said earlier, presented this budget, which makes this the fifth budget in a row that we are below the fiscal year expenditures for 2008, 2009. In context, Moody's has just reaffirmed our AAA bond rating, which is the highest bond rating a town can receive for the fourth year in a row, or in four years, three years that we've, since we've been first awarded it. And they noted our sound fiscal management, stable tax base, and track record of conservative budgets. So while you'll hear a lot over the next couple of weeks of what we couldn't fund with a 0.5 percent increase from the department heads, we did continue that track record of conservative budgets, which Moody's likes to see, which translates to reduced bond costs for our taxpayers. In addition, Moody's also noted that we returned $340,000 to the general fund last year from cost savings and internal controls. So those are significant contributions that the town made to the overall fiscal conservative budget. What you'll hear tonight is Mary Ann will review the primary drivers of the budget. Those include contractual increases, including salary benefits and pension costs. And I wanted to publicly thank Simsbury CSEA-represented employees for their contribution to help balance this budget by agreeing to increase pension fund contributions, increased healthcare co-pays, and a first-ever contribution to the town's OPEB, and introduction of the first-for-the-town defined contribution plan option for new hires. These actions will help stabilize the future obligations of the town to our employees and will help alleviate the costs for our Simsbury taxpayers. Another driver of the budget that you'll hear about over the next several nights is additional funding for the Farmington Valley Health District. They are under increasing pressure for inspections for food service entities. We also have added additional funding for part-time help in the building inspection department because of the recent increased activity in town. We have more than $17 million in projects that have been approved or are underway, which will come online for the grant list, for future grant list growth. That includes Dorset Crossing Urgent Care Center, a 12-lot residential subdivision on Sand Hill, and the approval of the 50,000-square-foot supermarket. And some, also wanted to publicly show some of the creative proposals by our town staff. Because of technological advances, our town tax collector who's here tonight, Colleen O'Connor, has eliminated some costs for printing and for staff in her department. And because of the increase in online pavements, some of which are no cost to our residents, 4,000 residents now pay their taxes online, which is the highest number of folks ever using our online system. And this has resulted in a reduced number of staff that we needed. As we headed into the fiscal years, I noted concerns remain about the state budget, the loss of $213,000 in general fund revenue that we are anticipating losing, and the loss of nearly $6.5 million in revenue from the proposed elimination of the car tax. So we are concerned about those as well. Again, I just wanted to thank all of our town staff and Mary Ann Harris, our Finance Director, for helping prepare this budget. And this was a real team effort, as you'll hear over the next several days. We made difficult choices as we presented this budget to you, and we look forward to having a discussion with you and our taxpayers. All of our budget information is online and can be found on the town website, and our budget workshop dates are also online as well. So we'll begin first by walking you through the budget overview. We have a handout for the public and for the board. As we began to put the budget together, probably right after the budget was approved last year, we began with our budget goals, and those are the department head independent analysis of what they would like to see, and those are all found in your budget book, and what the drivers of our budgets are. We also will provide a budget history, so you can see the budget in context over the last five, 10 years. We did something different this year, which is to show a breakdown by department of where the taxpayer dollars go. So now our taxpayers will be able to see which departments are larger than others and where we spend our money. We've identified our cost-saving efforts, and we've summarized the next steps in the budget process so that we can encourage our residents to contact us and let us know as we go throughout this process what their opinions are. So again, just number one, our priorities as we prepared this budget was certainly to provide for public health and safety. With five emergency disasters over the last two years, we've gotten pretty good at that. And we really focused on what we need to do to keep our residents safe and protected. We then looked at providing quality services at an affordable cost, so we looked at what the cost of the services we were providing and whether we could come up with a different way of providing them or eliminating them completely. We also worked hard to maintain our status as one of the best towns in Connecticut. Our rankings in Hartford Magazine and our ranking by Money Magazine certainly identified some of the unique attributes and assets the town has, and we tried to honor those as we prepared this budget. Those on the board, and with Shannon as a newcomer, it's no surprise that our pressures on our budget include our health insurance costs for our town employees, our pensions costs, which the town has always funded at 100 percent, but with the investment drops has really resulted in a loss to our investments, our contract settlements, and certainly things that we can't control, which is utilities and materials. Those put a lot of pressure on the town budget just to stay even. Our revenues that we look at in preparing the town budget is certainly our grant list, which is down 14 percent and has been stagnant over the last several years. The fact that we are in a revaluation year, which is required by state law and has been completed and will be implemented in the next fiscal year, state aid reductions, which we're anxious about and which we've shared as well, and certainly some concerns about our largest taxpayer, which is the Hartford Insurance Group. Hartford is meeting with the Subcommittee tomorrow, sorry, tomorrow's Tuesday, Wednesday, to update us, and will keep the board updated as well. But there's certainly those pressures about our top taxpayers certainly a concern. We thought we'd give you the context of the budget, the recent Board of Selectmen budget history. As you can see, since 2008 and 2009, we have either decreased the town budget or kept it under a 1 percent increase. So we've significantly controlled the cost of our budget going up. Some of the savings, besides the savings on a year-to-year basis, some of the savings by not filling vacancies and by reorganizing have longer-term effects. And as we saw when we did our pension analysis, the fact that salary increases have been lower than anticipated and the fact that we haven't filled vacancies has resulted in savings of about $125,000 to $150,000 in just our pension line item account. So there's some long-term savings as well. The recent budget history of increases and decreases, we thought we'd put that in context with you as the overall budget. As our taxpayers know, the Town of Simsbury budget, while we focus a lot of time on the budget, is really only one quarter of the town overall budget. So when taxpayers go to the budget referendum vote, they're voting on the entire Town of Simsbury budget and the Board of Ed budget and the debt budget and the non-public school budget, which gives you the total tax debt and determines our tax rate. So while we focus on the Board of Selectmen budget, it's really only a small piece of the overall budget. Based on the new updated taxable assessments, we thought we'd give you an example of what the median taxable assessment and tax rate is for the Town of Simsbury residents. From 2002 to 2006, the median tax assessment was about $1679,000, which is 70 percent of home value, which meant the median home value was about $256,000. Over the last several years, the assessment, the average home values have increased to about $330,000, which means the median taxable assessment is $231,000. What that means is, if you use the current mill rate, the median tax bill for the residents of Simsbury is approximately $7,484. The reason this is significant is because, once we have what the median tax bill is for our residents, we can now break down how those tax bills are allocated and how those taxes are allocated. So this slide shows you that if you were an average taxpayer, median taxpayer, not average, but median, and paid $7,484 a year in your taxes, you can see the breakdown is that $5,225 of your tax bill will go to the Board of Education. That means that $1,479 comes to the Board of Selectmen. That is the budget that we control, that's the budget that we allocate, and that's the budget that we are talking about and focusing on tonight. Debt retirement, sorry, go back, thank you. Debt retirement is another portion of that, and we have added fire, the fire district costs as well, because taxpayers, while they don't, while that money doesn't come into the town's coffers, the town does collect the fire district tax, everyone has to pay that tax, and we allocate it through our tax collection department. So that's the breakdown. If you wanted to break down even further, you can see on a monthly basis what the average resident in Simsbury is paying. For the Town of Simsbury Board of Selectmen budget, we receive about $123 per taxpayer per month to allocate our expenditures. The Board of Ed contributes, is collecting $435 a month. We took a look at the median tax bill over the last eight years. We did this just to see what the impact has been on our taxpayers and to see what the burden has been. And if you look at the Board of Selectmen's budget, there really is no surprise that, given the decreases in town budgets, that we have really kept the median tax bill on a monthly basis exactly where it was in 2008 and 2009, which is significant. So from a taxpayer standpoint in the Town of Simsbury, they're paying the exact same per month that they were paying in 2002, 2008, and 2009. Now, because, again, that town budget is only one quarter of the overall budget, that doesn't mean that the entire tax bill stayed the same, and you can see where the allocations went on a monthly basis. So what do we do with that $123 per month? We took a look at each of the departments and found our larger departments are no surprise, our Police Protection Department and Public Works. We have 35 sworn personnel, and we've had 33,000 calls last year. Road paving and maintenance, this is probably the one that gets the most attention over the last several years with snow plowing and cleaning up, and obviously with 164 miles of town roadway, there's a significant cost to maintain that. We have 18 highway department personnel and 12 snow trucks. Our library services, we have 477,000 items circulated and about 14,149 borrowers, and the library answered about 53,000 questions. How you keep track of those, Sue, I don't know, but that's the number. On the town hall side, we processed 140 land use applications, which is significantly up. Our building permits are also up. We performed 1,900 inspections, had 15,000, have 15,000 registered voters, and issued marriage licenses. On the engineering capital projects, we had nine capital projects that are currently being managed at a cost of $8.2 million, and we're very proud that our staff has really been great about finding additional grant funding, which obviously allows us to not increase the budget, because we've supplemented the budget through our success in getting grants such as to maintaining a hall, which would have been a capital project, and those total 3.8 million. Our emergency response, again, has been five major natural disasters incidents in the last two years. So obviously, we've spent a lot of time and focus on our emergency preparedness. And we've had 200, thanks to Sean Kimball, who prepared tonight's presentation. We've also entered the tweeting and the Facebook status. So thank you, Sean. Rounding out our departments, we maintain parks, pools, and recreational services. We have 23 hundred acres of open space. When the closing of the final phase of Ethel Walker is completed, we'll be about 31 percent open space for the town. We have 30 playing fields, two pools, 30,000 users of Simsbury Farms, and 39,000 rounds of golf at Simsbury Farms, and I haven't played one of them. Social services and senior center, you'll be hearing a lot about the Dial Ride program. We had 11,000 passengers traveling 67,000 miles, 8,500 requests for social services, and 972 senior fitness classes offered. So that is roughly the overview. If you want to see how the breakdown per department applies, this slide is really significant. You can see that public safety makes up the bulk of our expenditures, followed by Public Works, and finally, our health benefits, retiree health and insurance, making up the top three portions of our town budget. We took a look at our budget history over the last four years and then going back the four years previously, and found that prior to the economic downturn, the budget actually on the Board of Selectmen did rise about 22 percent. Some of that was to offset the OPEB contribution, and that was made prior to that as well. Over the last few years, you can see we have had a significant decrease in the town budget, and that obviously reflects the grant list stagnation, the loss of state aid, and the difficult economic conditions that we're in. We have our budget history, our town full-time employees, and I want to thank Mrs. Ko for bringing this to our attention, because she mentioned the number of employees in the CAFR, and we went down, and she was correct, that the total number of employees was larger than the 137, but we took a look at what our full-time employees were and actually tracked that. We currently have 137 employees, which is down significantly from 99 as well. And again, because of the number of employees, those translates to cost savings, not only on the salaries, but also on some of the benefits as well, and the pension costs. Some of the cost-saving efforts that I want to credit town staff with is obviously our grants. We couldn't have presented these budgets if our town staff weren't really good at identifying grants and going after grants, and it's been really significant. So I want to congratulate everyone for their help in that. Our volunteer positions as well, we have more than 30 volunteer board and commissions, and the attention on tourism and beautification and all the other boards and commissions that we have, we couldn't fund those important efforts that are done through all volunteer work. We switched our retiree health plan that the Board of Selectmen endorsed, and we saved $240,000 last year, and we're able to return those funds to the town coffers. The online tax payment option, which I mentioned before, to the credit of Colleen and her staff, now has 4,400 users, and we'll be offering an option to remind folks online next year as well. And our energy savings awards totaled $400,000. So all of that has gotten us to tonight, which is the beginning of the budget presentation of a budget of $18,128,810, which is an increase of $90,210, 0.5 percent. Some of the things that you will not hear make up the, I believe it was over 4 percent of the department head requests. So when you look at department head requests, which was in excess of a 4 percent budget in the town, you can obviously see that we could not include all of the things and all of the items that we would like to have, but felt that our taxpayers couldn't afford to pay for at this point. Next steps, obviously, tonight's the beginning of the budget. We'll continue tomorrow night with Public Works, Engineering, CIP, and CNR, move on to Social Services and Land Use, then move to Parks and Rec, General Government, and conclude with a budget discussion for a possible referral to the Board of Finance. We have from tonight until March 27th, when we have to present our budget to the Board of Finance, so we have plenty of time. Actually, we presented this budget earlier than is required by charter to give the public and the board an opportunity to spend as much time reviewing the budgets and asking questions and making the best decisions they can. We then have the public hearing of the Board of Finance, April 9th, again, on April 24th, and finally, a budget referendum on May 14th. Any questions on our overview? Okay, thank you. I'll now ask Mary Ann to take the budget book and walk you through what's included, where to find information, and highlight some of the changes over last year's budget.
As you all see, you've got your new books this evening. And we'll put Mary's budget message in the book, because there's a slot. If you look, if you open your books up, we have a table of contents for fiscal year 2014. If you remember last year, Mr. Ilk helped us put this book together. So what we did was pretty much follow his format this year, but we made some changes to our, to make our system work for us. The first section is the, which are not in here, there's pieces that are not in the book yet. But let's go to revenues and expenditures, which you should see, there's a tab for it. And the first is we did the revenues. And what the proposals look like, property taxes go up under, this includes the Board of Ed, would go up under the proposed estimate. And that's due to the decrease in intergovernmental revenues, and interest income is down, we're not anticipating getting any more. We are seeing some differences in other revenues, it's slightly, it's slightly lower, but it's different things coming in. So we projected what we expected to get in our revenues. Then the next page is the expenditures, and that breaks down all the departments in this number, and those numbers do balance back. And then you can see the pie chart that we have here. And then the next section is General Government, which is, it'll say General Government under Tab 1. You'll see, on each section, you'll get a yellow worksheet, and on the yellow worksheet, it'll tell you what the actual fiscal year 2012 was, the budget 13, what we're estimating in 13. As you'll notice all along, that we're making estimates in 13 that are, in some instances, are higher than they were when this budget came in. And that is due to the town settling three union contracts this year, and they've got back pay in this year and their current year raise. So that's been approved in December, and those numbers, anything that came in before January 15th in my office, those numbers were included in our deliberations when we were putting these budgets together, and all the department heads had those new numbers. So they use them for their departments.
So just for clarification, I think that's important, Mary Ann, just so, in prior years when contracts were not settled, those numbers were not included, but because most of our contracts have been settled, except for three, we did include where those contracts were settled into the line item. So you'll see those numbers reflected accurately.
Yes, and when you're going through the budget, you're going to see that the payroll accounts have risen, and in some cases, it's close to 6 percent. But that includes staff, that includes all the staff in the department who are part of that, the three unions that did settle, but also it includes steps and next year. So you've got that, and those numbers are increasing. That was a very large challenge when we sat down to put this budget together, to keep the recommendation that the First Selectmen wanted, to come in with a .5. This was our major challenge, because we had budgets that came in much higher, just in their payroll accounts alone, due to the settlements. But we also got some savings in other areas, and that's where we recognized that we could come in and make the corrections. So this is, and the table of contents, the first section is Central Administration, Administrative Services, and Community Services. And there's a mission statement in here, and all sections had mission statements. And one of our, one of our big challenges was the under Administrative Services. Last year, we changed how we accounted for things, and Central Administration is just the First Selectmen's office. The Administrative Services is the building and the other departments that come into the First Selectmen for, to get, to get requests. And one of the requests is our conferences and education. This year, our request for conferences and education was close to $70,000. And we went back and we looked, and the First Selectmen made a decision that there would, we would have to limit this to the, back to this year's level, and then actually ended up going lower, because when we were cutting, we had to cut more. We discovered that we have, in every union contract, employees are allowed to have education. So we put an education reimbursement in. Instead of having it come all out of the conferences and education budget, conferences and like five-day education, we were looking at that that would be, if you're going to a class, but you're not going to college, that would fall under conferences and education. But education reimbursement is if you attend college, and you, it has to be approved, and the town will pay for a class, and it covers their textbooks. So we have had that this year. And I put down what the departments all requested, so you can see what our requests were and what the bottom line was. It's 27.5 between the education reimbursement and the conferences and education. That's for the whole, that includes the police, the library, social services, and all the town departments that are in this building. That's what we have for next year. We did increase our travel reimbursement, which is your mileage, to $10,000, and that request came in at 14,225, because we've eliminated some out-of-state conferences. We were able to do that. Then we went to the, the last one was the Community Services or Special Activities. For years, you've been maintaining $3,800 for the Memorial Day Parade, and they do a really good job in the Town of Simsbury for their parade, and you get, it's very, it's very good. And then our Community Services, we're looking at 62,000, we're looking at $59,140. We're part of the Farmington River Valley Watershed, the Teen Center, CCM, the services, and the other organizations. CROG is in there at 16, too. I don't have them all broken down in your books, but we've gotten, most of our...
You're still on Tab 1, right, Mary?
Yeah, still on Tab 1. It would be the next sheet that came through, so if you're on Tab 1.
And we'll go into more detail. I think Mary Ann's just trying to give you an overview of what to look for and what to look for.
And we didn't cut in the Community Services, because we felt that those could stay where they were. Then you go to Tab 2, which is all your land use commissions and public buildings here. There were some cuts, but we discovered that under their dues and subscriptions, that $4,300 we were counting up in the Board of Selectmen... up in the Board of Selectmen Community Services. So we were able to make that cut. But there were other cuts that we had to make here, and, but the land use commission has, is I'm here?
He'll be here.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is, he actually put all of his postage into one account, is what he said, for all his land use boards. So that did help him. And in this account, there was a postage account. But we looked at what our postage was with our meter, and our rate did go up this year a penny. But because, it does add up.
Many counts.
When we get down to finance, you'll see where we are saving money in postage. There were, you know, there were some savings, and we're able to electronically send things. So that was one of the reasons we made these decisions. But this is the land use under tab two. Under tab three, you can look at that. Is the elections, administration. They do not, they're down one election this year. So that's why their, their numbers came down slightly for the requests. And they asked that we create a line item for their, when they, when you're at the, when you're, when you're a poll worker, they asked us if we would put in a line item specifically for the, we called it program supplies. And they asked for $900, and that's for the poll, that's for the meals, for coffee and donuts and what they get. And they, they put in $200 for conferences and education. Under tab four is the legal services budget. And if you notice, we took $25,000 off of labor relations for next year. It's anticipated that we won't have any union contracts that are open that need to be, that we'll be doing back for time.
Well, we're going to continue. We've had a track record of the last couple of years, given a fair amount. Probably has something to do with my prior history in life and my background, but I think we can continue to anticipate savings in that area. We may face some, some challenges in that area, but I'm comfortable with that.
Then the next tab is the town clerk, and there was, I just talked to her a few minutes ago, and she has some questions, but her budget just came down a little bit. Again, her budget is top-heavy with salaries. All the small department budgets, you will notice, are top-heavy with salaries. They are, there's, the majority of their budget is a salary account and for overall expenses.
Right, and then just a clarification, they, their, their only costs are staffing in those small departments, where they're collecting fees, recording fees. They're really, they're not buying equipment. It's not like the public works department where they're buying huge supplies or equipment. So what you're seeing in their smaller budgets are just basically salary. That's very different.
Those are the cost drivers for these departments. And then we left the probate court the same, which I'm surprised you don't have in your book. We do have it, so we'll get it to you tomorrow. Oh, no, it's, I'm sorry, it's number six.
It's there.
We left the probate court the same. They did not request any more. And working with Richard, our costs on that one comes down because we do allocate to the other communities their cost basis. Under the next section is the financial services, and those departments are the Board of Finance, the Finance Office, Tax Collection Assessor, Information Technology, and Auditors. Right now, there's a question regarding advertising with the Board of Finance, so that number could come down lower with them for next year. We've had this discussion.
We're not going to let those guys advertise, right?
Well, they have to.
It'd be a bad idea.
They have to advertise, and I've been...
I don't think it sets a good precedent. The Board of Finance budget goes up, do you?
And no, and actually, and Mr., well, we estimated, we found out that their advertising was too low for this year, so we're estimating it higher. And...
Mary Ann, what percentage increase is that for them? Just for fun.
Just for fun.
It's really not that much, because we're estimating in their, for their advertising. There was, we, we only had one line item for advertising, and we had lowered it when we were doing the initial in 2012. And it does go up 21%.
And Mary Ann, when you say advertising, you mean the public notice?
The legal notices, yes, and that was the reason. But talking to Paul Hahnold, he said to me that he believed that we did not have to pay that. So there's going to be, there's other issue, there's others that we will be discussing when we meet.
If I could just, I believe there is legislation out there to try to, for example, the charter revision. I mean, that was phenomenally expensive. And to the extent we can encourage our legislators to keep that from moving, that would be a huge help to all departments.
Our legal notices for last 2012 was close to $40,000, actually, for all departments.
It doesn't mean we're going to post anything less, though, all right? It just means we're going to post it in more widely accepted forums that perhaps don't cost nearly as much money.
If anything, you are, right now, there are more ways of getting this information than there ever happened. All the website, they're all sent out by email, they're all registered for me, they're 8,000 if you want, and nobody reads that section of the newspaper.
Is really small. What it would be is, you would have to advertise in a locally, you'd have to advertise in a major newspaper, but you could direct them to your website. It's like the legislation is supposed to do, which would be a help to the town. Because we put a lot of stuff out on our website, all of our RFPs are out on our website, so people can come in and get those. They're there if they want to look up information. The next department is mine, and we've been working on getting these schedules. And I wanted to point out to you folks that we, we made some changes in 2012, and it's, we're seeing them in 13. Staffing, yeah, there was an increase in staffing. But our, our costs, the postage, we estimated it would be 39.75. We're coming in closer to 2,500. So I budgeted 2,500 for next year. That includes the first-class mail going up. The town of Simsbury has been able to, working with the departments, we were able to move the accounts payable from every single week to bi-weekly. And we save costs on checks. We save costs on, we're able to catch the duplicates faster. We also save costs on postage and mailing it out. So we are looking at different ways to see some more cost-saving measures in the department. But we did see some physical measures that we could save money there. There wasn't much else, other than, again, I said to you, we're top, we have, we're heavy in their cost basis. The next department is the tax department, and Colleen and her staff do a great job. And we're looking at making some changes in that department, and we'll discuss that in a later day. So there was some cost savings there. Colleen has seen, again, her postage account went down from 6,000 to 4,500. We're not mailing out as much. We're able to send it out electronically and with reminders with the new system if they sign up for it. We were able to, this year, get the e-alert system going through when you got your tax bill, so you could sign up for that. And that was, that was a benefit to the town. The assessors is up slightly, and it's, again, it's due to, it's all, it's, it's the department, the contract settlements. And that's the reason that that went up. And their contractual services went up $200, because they had, they actually went up more because we're now out of reevaluation. But we're using quality data, and those went up. And under tab 11 is information technology. Oh, there was a change in how we were reporting. Information technology, you'll notice, has a decrease in their full-time staffing. But we actually put money into the Board of Selectmen's part-time staffing for a position that got moved to that department this year. And their, their budget is coming in with their, with their requests. And then our audit services. The next tab is planning and development. And there's a large decrease in the planning, in the community development department. And that was, we were making moves within that division. We made changes in the Director of Community Development's department, where we added money to the building department. So we took money out of this department and added it to the building department. And there were some things that we said they could do it in calendar year, in this fiscal year 13, we asked them to do it versus going into next year. That's some of the reasons that you'll see that their recommended, recommendations were zero. And the changes that he made. Under tab 14, the planning department, we just leveled them back to their dues and subscriptions. Again, it's raises. This is union contracts. And under 15, we added into, there are some increases here. We added $25,000 into the building department part-time account. And that's for an administrative, that's for an assistant building inspector and help with an administrative assistant. Their contractual services, this year, we're looking at in 2013 in their contractual services account. That account, we're looking at close to $14,000, because we've had some, we had, there's a software that we purchased through CROG. And then there's also, we had to pay for the assistant, an assistant building inspector to come in while our building inspector takes a vacation or goes to a conference, so we have to have somebody in his office. By adding in a building department inspector part-time, we were able to alleviate some of those additional costs. But we also had, this year, there was a building that they had to board up because it was condemned, and that was the town's responsibility. We will see at some point along the line the money being returned to us, but it's not there now. I should tell you, we're estimating building permits to go up quite high from what we estimated last year. Our estimate for 2013 was 325,000. Right now, I'm looking at $450,000 coming in just in this fiscal year. After talking to Henry and seeing his numbers coming in, he's already met, he's, after seven months, he's close to fulfilling his, the number of building permits being issued this year. Then we go into public safety. And, yep, if you remember last year, we moved the animal control department from a special revenue fund to the general fund. So it is a small department, and we did do, there was some increases, again, there in that department budget. And the, but the police department, we've made some changes. There's been staffing changes within the department, so there were some, some decreases in his overtime account. Because when they hire a new employee, they will come in at a lower rate of pay. The chief and I discussed that. We, you'll see, you all have gotten a history of what's, what they're requesting and why. And you'll see in the police department, he wrote no change. He was really working on it. But we cut gasoline by the track to $85,000, which was the, he had asked 97.150. We left it unchanged. And he will take, you know, we're, we're giving them, they, again, because it's a large department, there were, they had several of their unionized employees, and we see raises and steps. Number 17 is just the animal control officer. And then number 18 is Simsbury Civil Fairness. They actually asked for a decrease from last year. The next section is public works. And these gentlemen did an absolutely wonderful job. We highlight on a few things, but here was where we, we, we found our biggest challenge in the public works department. Because we had to balance the needs of the residents and what the, what the town could afford. So we will be talking, working with Tom on that. And the first tab you'll see is 19, is just the administrative services and a brief overview. I'm sorry, the first one is engineering, I'm sorry. And there, they're looking to make a, is it making a person's report? Yeah, making one part-time or full-time. And that is also included with the, that is an individual within the union. The engineering department went up slightly due to that, the increase. $1,400. Number 20 is public works administration. And you can read the program notes. From there, we went through, and they were looking for some overtime. We gave them seasonal help. And we made some adjustments to the advertising budget and to the office supplies here. Buildings and maintenance, these are our buildings that get maintained. All of the town buildings, the staffing comes through the buildings and maintenance under tab 20. This is all public works. That's the staffing and the administrative, the buildings and maintenance. Then there's this building here, town offices. We leveled some of the line items in this one, because they were, they were higher than the current year, but we discovered what they were looking for. And this budget is coming in, where we've made some leveling. We've leveled the building improvements from 7,500 to 5,000, was a $2,500 decrease.
And just to, just to follow up on what Mary Ann's talking about in the public works department, I think you'll hear a good argument by Mr. Royce here tonight to increase the number of roads paved and to increase our budget to allow more roads to be paved and what have you. And we would love to do, I think the town's putting forward a really aggressive plan to really upgrade our roads and do more roads than we did this year. And again, that'll be a policy decision by the board to balance the context of the expenditures with, certainly, everybody would like to get their road paved and sooner rather than later. And so you'll hear, hear some good, good discussions, see how difficult those choices are. Go ahead, Mary, thank you.
We're going through the buildings. You know, we level funded what their building improvements were. And the miscellaneous buildings, we, facilities maintenance to a contract, which we found out was for $4,000. The next group is our, these, the next two budgets, the highway labor and equipment and the highway programs and facilities are our largest budgets. And we did make some slight adjustments. They were looking for a truck, and we didn't fund it in this budget. But, but it was, they, I had gotten a phone call for the truck, and so I said, okay. So it was equipment that is not, wasn't funded in this budget. The next budget, facilities and programs, the contractual services and the tree service. We put in 40,000 for tree, tree service after last year's storm. And 50,000 for contractual services, and I believe that's the Iron Horse Boulevard, correct?
Yeah. The contractual services, all of the items we do using outside services. So it's the plowing, the iron horse loss, it's the mowing along iron horse in the summertime, it's the cleaning of all of the catch basins, which is required for stormwater discharge permits, and the heat collection.
And then one of our biggest ones that we had, and we didn't, didn't take this lightly, is we had to make some, some serious cuts. And this is, this is the one that got the cuts. And we'll let Tom discuss it when he comes tomorrow night on where these cuts were. We tried to level to the current year, and we were unable to in the highway and facilities and in the roads and drainage. So we were trying to do that, and we couldn't. We did give him some additional funds. He did ask for in his landfill account, it went down. I want everyone to know that. And that's due to, we signed a new contract in, with CRA, and our numbers went down. We went down from 131,000 to 77,000. The next section is social services, and we start with the health department under 21. And that is due to the hiring of health instructors for the backlog of services. That was the reason it went up 16,560. Social services is under tab number 22. And they've got their mission statements. Again, it's, these are, these budgets are being driven by salaries. And their increases are, if you look at them, are, just if you look at the salary account, that's where the increases is coming from. that's where the increases is coming from. They've tried to level all their services, their dues and subscriptions, everything they could do. But because of a small budget, the next page would be their elderly outreach worker. It's a part-time position and it has stayed the same for several years now. The senior center went up again. It's due to hiring. And they now have a lunch program on Fridays. You can go to lunch at the senior center. We have to pay staff, part-time staff there. And that's now included in their budget, in this year's budget. But we also pay for the services for that. But we also get reimbursed from the town. And then the dial-a-ride program, which is our next one. And that's, it's a contract. We have a contract. And we also have extra trips we charge for. But we do offer those to our residents. And that stayed the same from last year to this year. Recreation, culture parks and recreation. It was a very interesting meeting with Mr. Toner. And tonight, I believe on your agendas, there's a few line items that he would like to do. And if they go through, then this budget, what we're proposing are where he told us to make these cuts. So, under his budget, we took out a few, his advertising, we reduced, we left his advertisements, I'm sorry. Copy and printing, we reduced back to, and we reduced his postage. The next budget was the pool, the seasonal pool. It's twenty-four eight. Parks and open space full-time maintenance, this is where we made some adjustments. After talking with Mr. Toner, we actually added money to his seasonal help. We added an additional $2,000 to his line item from his request. We want to highlight that. We also want to highlight that he has found some cost savings for the town in the facilities, not in the water charges, the dues and subscri, no, in the water charges. And I think, believe the electric would go down, if we were talking to him correctly. If that's the case, and with the changes. And then we took, and then he said he didn't need a few items. And we took those out and he was able to get back. He needs, some facilities needed some maintenance and he wanted us to give him that money. So we gave it back to him, budget. If you're looking, when we, when we sit down and meet with these departments, I will have my laptop and we will be able to go in. If you want to see any changes made, we will be able to make those changes. I want you all to know that. It'll be real time in our system. The fields are reduced by $2,000. Oh, it's over in the diesel field. It's in the, it's in the vehicle maintenance. And then the parks and open space memorial pool, it stayed the same. The next section is our library. We had some real challenges again with the library. And Mrs. Bullock and her, and the library board have met with us. We, again, it's very much driven by salaries here and some other additional costs, but basically, it's salaries and contractual services that have gone up slightly. We've made, because of the changes in their union contract for part-timers, I believe they've got, Tom, what was their change in the contract for part-timers?
Well, as expected, on July the first, part-time employees and Mrs. folks are working fewer than seventeen and a half hours a week, will no longer be paid for vacation pay or overtime, or not, sorry, vacation pay or holiday pay. So there will be some decreases there. As with most of what Marianne has gone over, particularly in the library, I believe there's, it's mostly CSEA folks. So a large part of the impact of the recent contracts that were there. Again, those come with some of the offsets that you guys all know about. But this is one area where we did make changes in the absence of part-time folks and it looked a little bit more useful for us.
Yeah, if the board members, this is really a win-win for the staff and for the library. It gives the library more flexibility in using the part-time workers and it also adjusts the salary of the part-timers as well.
So this is where we were, we worked with them. And you can go through that. It just goes through the library administration, what their costs were. We made some cuts in office supplies and in their programming, their program supplies. But we also talked with Mrs. Bullock and I said to her, if that's not where you want us to take the money from, just please let us know and we'll make those adjustments for them. Library, we had to actually put back money to the library young adult, part-time staff. We had a misunderstanding, so they got their fully funded back to that from what they were saying. Then we, there, we left, we left all their reference material the same. So they're being, we don't want them to, they want, they can purchase books and CDs and audio, different audio things that they purchase through there. So those line items have been kept level, funded to where they asked us to. The next line item is the children's services and the part-time help. The, we did see some decreases in the buildings and brown services, the maintenance of the building. We level funded certain items and certain items we said that we needed to work on with them to move forward. And we made some cuts there. The next section is fringe benefits. And number twenty-six is the, tab twenty-six is employee benefits. We were looking at our costs. And right now, we're projecting that we'll see a five and a half percent increase for health insurance next year. But we're going to be getting, contributions are changing, so we were able to lower some of our costs in there. In that account is our OPEB and we're estimating that at seven and a half percent. Until we get direction, that might go down to seven also. There were things in there that we could, if more employees go from the PPO plan to the HMO plan, there's a cost savings to the town. So right now, we have two health insurance plans. But one of our biggest savings was, and it happened last year, is that we moved all of our post-sixty-five retirees from our PPO plan to a fully insured plan with Anthem, Blue Cross, the Shield. And there's where we've seen some major savings. Last year in ten months, we saved $200,000. And this year, we're seeing those savings again. So we are seeing savings. Our life insurance, our disability insurance due to raises, those also went up. Our social security, when I fine-tuned it a little bit more, we can go up, we're going up about $11,000 due to those raises. And you will see under the requested column, you'll see the actual seven percent increase for police pension and for town pensions. But in the recommended, we put in the seven and a half percent. That will, we will make those moves and we have to. And unemployment compensation, we left at $5,000. So that's there. Our liability, our workers' comp is going up eight percent. And our comprehensive is going up six. So we're looking at between, we're looking at a close to seven percent increase across the board on this one. And that's due to our open case claims that we've had and they're our experience right now. Our operating transfers and contingency reserve are under, are in the next one. And number tab twenty-six is a contingency reserve and the operating transfers. We're estimating those are contingency reserve for salaries is $150. That could change. It could be reduced. If we have this contract resolved, this number could come down slightly. The, what we're paying forward in 2000 for operating transfers, you'll see in '09, there's no, we're finishing this year. In 2010, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and the new one in fourteen, with the Board of Finance allowing us to add another $50,000. It's $83,565. We reduced the request for police vehicles from $83,000.
I'm sorry, Marianne, can you go back to?
It's tab twenty-six.
Yeah, so you're talking, not talking about CNR, right?
No, I haven't gotten there yet.
Right, okay. Make sure we.
CNR?
Thank you.
One of our big ones. But this is where the operating transfer for CNR would show up, is in here. So that's where I was showing that. And it's over a five-year plan. The police vehicles is $65,000, but we'll discuss that when we get to the CNR. And their operating transfers were $392,130. Debt service, right now, we know what the principal payment is going to be for the new bonds that we are issuing on Wednesday. We do not know the interest. So that will know probably Wednesday afternoon or Thursday at the earliest. So those are there. Then we go into our special revenue funds, the sewer use fund, the residential properties, this is Gray Farms fund. Water pollution control is down considerably this year. And that's due to some of our capital projects coming off the book and they're not putting them off, they're not requesting. Again, we have benefits for their unionized employees that have settled, but not everybody in that division has settled yet. So it could look lower. And we also have our long, and it's under twenty-eight, twenty-eight. We're in water pollution control, it goes seven pages. And you can see what their requests are for that. And they will be paying an operating transfer to the town of $97,150 because they've reduced their overall costs in the last year. From 106,545, there was a reduction. And their debt service is, is level, actually is down. And that's due to accounting for the shares from Canton and, Avon and Bramby. I'm sorry, Avon and Bram, Avon and Bramby. It's just the Simsbury share we're counting in our budgets. Number twenty-nine is the residential properties. It's been level funded this year. Tom has done a great job with that management over there and we were able to do that. We have a housing loan over there for $8,525. Then, because you didn't see anything in the parks, Jerry combined parks and rec for your reading pleasure under number thirty, tab thirty. And this is the farms budget. And again, salaries here and equipment and maintenance. There really wasn't much changes in these department budgets on this end. We can go to the CNR budget, which is, it'll say CNR on it. And as you saw last year, we had the fiscal year fourteen, it says fiscal year fourteen. These are the capital non-recurring requests. And we prioritized our requests this year. We have high priority, mid-priority, low priority, state grants. And as you'll see down here, we have police radios coming out of the special revenue fund. This fund for the police department, we can take the money from. And we can also take the $22,000 that we're taking off from the operating transfers from this account. I've spoken with the chief, there's sufficient funds in the account to take the money. And because we've charged for the vehicles, we can get the, take the money from this account. There were some hard choices to be made. You'll notice that all of the equipment for the DPW has been moved out to the town aid road account. And those requests are in here. But because, it looks like the governor's budget is going to give us $360,000 for town aid road next year, we moved those budgeted items out to those, to that budget. LoSiP is going up and we're giving, we're giving the pavement management for LoSiP at $157,360. And the clubhouse carpeting for the Simsbury Farms is getting $23,000 for LoSiP. And then behind that, number thirty-one is all the requests. We did have some requests, I should point out, the, we're looking for an exchange server for the, for the police department. And that's $55,000. It's hardware, software, hardware and software and training there. The police department was looking for quite a bit. We've had to make some changes in this account. And I believe, and we're upgrading the town's office suite. Right now, we're on 2003, we're on XP, we're on '07, we're on '10. It depends on which office you're in, where we are. So we want to upgrade every department to the same. And that's a, that's a $19,000 increase. And that's just for licensing that we put in the budget. And the final is the capital improvement program. And what was requested, that's by itself. And what we, you'll see in here this year is the capital improvement program on a single sheet and it shows sources of funding. But you'll see general government and board of education. This is the sheet that we prepare for our bonds. So we decided to give you a copy of this, so you can see where we're at. And in the out years, you can see in fiscal 14, we're low, but you, we start picking up some big numbers in '15, '16, '17, '18. And it goes down again in '19. One of the biggest projects right now we're looking at is the renovation of Henry James Middle School. That's one of our bigger projects. Another big project is the phase two and fifteen of Ethel Walker. But we did get a grant of a half a million dollars. So we do know that that $1,150 is supplement, is a $500,000 grant. So it's only $650 to the town. And the Terrafield Greenway for $656 has a grant attached to it also. In 2014, if we get a grant, the center area charrette infrastructure is at $1850, but we're looking at a grant of $500,000 for that right now, if the grant comes through. The farming to riverbank stream stabilization, that would be paid for a special use fund. And we would have to borrow $2,606,000. But we would do, the town needs to look at that as to whether or not they're willing to go this year with those numbers. And we've updated from '13, that wasn't accepted, into '14, the DPW truck wash, the town offices, the town Della Data and the town hall flat roof replacement and Eno Hall roof repairs. And we've been discussing with Mr. Zouy, finding other funds to fix, to do the roof at Eno in this building. And then the board of ed has a boiler replacement. You can see this. On the next page, we have, it's saying draft on it and it still is in draft format. But this is the form that you all saw last year. And it'll show you where we're sitting and what we estimated before this was going through, where seven percent would be for debt and how we would get there. So we were seeing what we have for debt service and moving forward. And then behind that, we have the project details for all the projects. Some of them are in color, some of them are in black and white. I do know that the boiler is, I guess it's on its last legs over at Squadron. So they are working on that. But we have challenges with the capital improvement program too. There has been a request to do design for the senior center in this budget for the capital plan. So there would be a senior community center design that would happen.
Thank you, Marianne. Thank you for all your hard work and your staff in preparing the budgets. It's, Marianne did a different, something different this year, and that is all the department heads have now, are now online and entered their own data. So that was a significant change from last year. I think it's run a lot smoother this year with department heads having more control over their own department's budgets.
It was really nice because the departments could now, department heads can now go online, look up where their spending is at, at any given day. They all have access to our system. And they have learned a lot. And some people say, oh geez. But they actually went in and they did their revenues too. I had them, they went into the revenue budgets, we walked them through their expenditure budgets. We started doing this in October so that we wouldn't have a mad rush in December, January timeframe. And all the department heads complied and did an absolute, I have to say, everyone did an absolutely fabulous job this year in the department heads because they did get their reporting and they actually filled in, you'll see there's notes. They wrote us all notes, let us know what they wanted. They wrote us all notes, let us know what they wanted and it really did help us when we were going through the process.
It's great. And I know some things that the public doesn't see, but takes a lot of time and it took a lot of time for you and your department and department heads in getting this process up and running. So thank you, your staff, all the department heads, certainly Tom Cook and Sean Kimball for helping prepare the budgets. And, you know, we'll look forward to having a conversation with the boards and the public. With that, we have a few minutes before we move into our public hearings. So just want to give boards an opportunity to ask questions or give Rich maybe a quick minute to just talk to you. He'll be talking to you tomorrow night about capital improvement plan. And if we have time, maybe Rich could just highlight some of the things. But I first want to give everybody a minute to ask any questions.
Lisa, I just have one question. Mary Ann, can you explain why the library sometimes falls under Culture Parks and Rec?
They are, they're the culture piece of the Culture Parks and Rec.
So we put that in there.
That's where they belong, yes, that's, that's what we were.
Historically, the way the town has done the budgets. I think that may be a surprise to some residents looking for it.
That's where it falls within them. They're, they're the culture piece of the Culture Parks and Rec. And the Health Department falls under Social Services because of the health and welfare codes that we use.
It's like breaking from a fire hose.
Well, it's helpful to have an overview. I think, Mary Ann, this is a good context for the board to now move forward. We have plenty of time to hold meetings and ask questions, but this puts the context in place for us and for the public as well. So now, the public is on notice of what departments have increased, decreased, and they can come to any of our workshops. And we've highlighted which nights we'll be focusing on certain budgets. So that should be helpful in letting people comment as well. So Rich, given the last couple of minutes, I didn't know if you wanted to just go over the capital improvement plan that we'll be talking about tomorrow night. And thanks to you for all your hard work and putting together the capital plan as well.
I'll just go through this very quickly for fiscal year 2014 volumes. Mary Ann gave you a very good summary of the one sheet, which shows all of the projects out over the six-year period as well as anticipated grants and other funding sources. So I'll just briefly go through this year's elements. The first one in is the emergency generator improvements. And that actually is a carryover of funds from last year where we had some commitment to fund the balance of that program out of general fund this year. The center area charrette is to implement a number of improvements in the center. Landscaping, lighting, sidewalks, street improvements, underground utilities, as well as parking improvements. And we do anticipate, as Mary Ann mentioned, a grant to help defray those costs.
Rich, can I ask you a question on that one? What's the difference between this year and last year when we saw it on the six-year plan? Last year we saw it at a million and change, now it's 1.8.
The main reason was the parking improvements that we've added. If you elect to proceed with the community senior center at Eno Memorial, one of the biggest challenges is parking. So we do have an additional number for those parking improvements.
The other change, Sean, is that we, we anticipated a $500,000 grant. We don't know if we got it. So we had to include it and then back it out.
That makes sense.
That had to add money to that line item as well.
Okay, thank you.
And then a number of the other items that you see here are carryovers from the prior years. Truck wash at DPW. A number of improvements in this building, HVAC controls, carpeting improvements to this room. Town teledata, infrastructure improvements consisting of wireless systems, fiber optics and all the necessary switching, equipment that would be needed. Town office flat roofs, this is kind of an interesting building, it has a combination of flat roofs and sloping roofs. This would be for those flat roof improvements. As well as improvements to Eno, as Mary Ann mentioned, we are looking to see what our fund balances are in a couple of accounts at Eno that we may be able to draw those funds from. Farmington River Stream Bank stabilization is a water pollution control facility item and that would be paid for out of their sewer use funds. That's a very important project in that our main south interceptor trunk line is protected by this proposed work. And finally, the main school project is a new boiler at the Squadron Line School. Our schools have very old boiler systems. Our new systems would be high efficiency gas condensing boilers as well as premium variable frequency drive pumps and motors. And that should, should in fact titillate us to a fairly substantial energy incentive grant from CLMP. And the one project that we have added this year finally is at the Senior Community Center. What we have added into that program is a design element. You will be receiving a recommendation shortly from the Public Building Committee based on the outcomes of their year-long study in terms of needs for the facilities, space needs and cost estimates, as well as a couple sites that you might want to consider. In order to move this project forward, in that the design can be quite complex, especially at Eno Memorial, is that I'm recommending we go to what's called 60% design development so we can very much define the space, the cost, as well as some of the key construction elements. And I'm estimating $204,000 for that effort. And I have programmed in here for fiscal year 2016, actual construction of that facility. But I think it's important that we get into the design elements because there are some options, obviously the big one is where you're going. And there's also a number of options and programs in space and how we share that space. And that design program allows us to really refine those so you can make an informed decision in anticipation of 2016's construction. I probably jumped ahead a couple steps there.
Great. Any questions for Rich?
Just to confirm, when you're talking about the monies for this design, it's, it's to give us more information on the options that are there. So you'd be taking?
It'll, hopefully what will happen is, based on the study that Public Building has done, you'll pick an option and then we'll go forward in refining the actual design at that selection. And try to get, there are a number of degrees of flexibility on what you bill. So depending on what comfort level you have on your cost, we can work around that in our design.
Thanks, great. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Okay.
Just a quick one on the financial side of the capital group plan. The out years especially, I mean, how does that, I mean, 18 million is not going to fit.
Oh, that 18 million, if you look, is, it's probably going to have to do with similar items. We would have to apply. That was, is 18-year, yeah, I don't think that, what?
Did we add a zero by mistake?
Yeah, I asked that question. Now, that's what it would be to put that area, get that under sewer construction and hopefully in that year we may be able to put it into the state to get the water funds at 2% loan rate.
Some of the projects also don't fit. If you look at the, obviously the Henry James renovation, that doesn't fit within the debt level. So those are a few conversations that we need to have with joint boards.
Okay.
What we were focusing on, I think, is the 2014, 2013, 14, and ensuring that that fit within the debt limits and then having conversations on the outlying years.
Right, no, absolutely. And that's obviously where my focus is. I just know some folks around on different boards focus on six years at a time versus one.
Yeah, and we, and we should and we do, just without having conversations about how that project will fit, it will never fit in a 10-year funding timeframe.
Right.
So, you know, there has to be some guidance as to how that project will, will fit.
That makes sense.
And it's a school project, so we defer to the Board of Ed to tell us how comfortable they feel spreading out the project, phasing it in. A lot of those questions need to be asked as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
It takes an easy initial when we approve it before the state releases a fund. So we do have some flexibility in '15, we're going to be, the old high school project is going, the advanced refunding kicks in. So there's some savings in our debt account, but this project, if I had to borrow upfront, we would not get it.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Information is on our website. All of our budget workshop updates are also available. And ask for motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We'll reconvene at 7 o'clock for a public hearing on.
I have to leave.
All right, calm down. Okay.